Good afternoon, I'm Janet, I'm the chairman of the meeting at this moment. So, I'd first start by reminding everyone that this meeting is being recorded. I will be used for transcription. All participants and I know that they are being recorded. Their participation constitutes their consent for recording. So if you don't want to be recorded, you can leave that. So we're going to begin with any additions or changes in the agenda. Don't see any, so we're going to move into the reelection of officers. I would like to nominate Danny to be chairperson of the library board.
What's the second motion? I moved a motion. I forgot. I make a motion to elect Danny as chairperson.
I'm setting that. Yes, I would like it. Motion was good. So now we also want, yeah, I would vice chair. We need a vice chair. We're doing the nominations. Now, let's see, I move, let's see, I move. Do nominate Janet for vice chair.
All right, next on the agenda is the minutes. Nancy did submit one change that she nominated Kim as vice president. So I copied and so forth. So from the comment, we have two, and then see all of the recordings. Are we just gonna do see all of the recordings or are we going to go to on them?
We could probably take them off.
So other comments? We've taken off. I have a motion to accept the minutes with David. All in favor? All the same side? On to budget. Reminded that the percentages are not correct because the budget has not been approved yet. So those totals are not, like the bills paid for is what we're almost discovering right now.
Oh. Making sure, okay. That's cool. So Emily, I'm just a little bit elected with one of those different balls than what you purchased for. Okay, because they had access.
Right, the same thing. Big Sandy does. So if they're the same ball, you would like to bring them back?
Are you using the? I haven't talked to.
Just keep them in storage, does she have room for storage? Two thirty, repairs, maintenance, supply. I think, yeah, just keeping them there and then have, as long as they're not in her way. In patrons' way.
They're in the closet.
Right, any other questions? May I have a new one standing to approve the budget? All in favor? All on the same side? Motion. All right, next on the agenda is the minutes. Nancy did submit one change that she nominated Kim as vice president. So I copied and so forth. Did like it or have a question? So. So from the comment, we have two, and then see all of the recordings. Are we just gonna do see all of the recordings or are we going to go to on them?
We could probably take them off.
So other comments? We've taken off. Who else? I have a motion to accept the minutes with David. All in favor? All the same side? On to budget. Reminded that the percentages are not correct because the budget has not been approved yet. So those totals are not, like the bills paid for is what we're almost discovering right now.
Oh. Making sure, okay. Oh, that's cool. So Emily, I'm just a little bit elected with one of those different balls than what you purchased for. Okay, because they had access.
Right, the same thing. Big Sandy does. Even if they're the same balls, you would like to bring them back?
Are you using the? Is that what we use here? I haven't talked to.
Just keep them in storage, does she have room for storage?
Yeah.
Two thirty, repairs, maintenance, supply. I think, yeah, just keeping them there and then have, as long as they're not in her way. In patrons' way.
They're in the closet.
Right, any other questions? May I have a new one standing to approve the budget? All in favor? All on the same side? So these are reports for July. So that was last month. Everyone was in full swing for summer reading. Big Sandy's overall theme was camp kindness, along with altogether now. Fort Benton, four displays, different themes through the library for America, American, Northern Legion, immigration. Dark Week Summer, UFO Aliens, Montana, Lewis and Clark, Altogether Now, and in YA was American historical fiction. I have been, projects include that I've been rotating the books in the spindles. And so I take the top row out, I move everything up, and then I put new ones in over here. And then I go over to the visitor center, and we have a spindle there. And it has seemed to really increase the, I don't want to use circulation, but just a lot of more people who take the books. Yeah, and we have had a volunteer in organizing the used books. And it's, you know, almost like a bookstore now. It's been doing an amazing job, and we have our summer reading program. And then up in Geraldine, her themes were America and new books. Her projects were summer reading program. The older kids completed a new free little community library in Parkham or else. And have started the butterfly mural. If you had been working with Kathy Bond before summer started to see what projects they could do. Little library, and there's the butterfly, and we got the ambulance and an iron truck. Took up some copy paper and 12-inch covers. And we still have a lot of the historical artifacts here, so waiting on the shed to go in up there. And then no change of hardwood, that's right now. Can I give you another shout out? Yeah, so Sammy Joe did a fantastic job. I don't know if everybody read this, but this is in our Geraldine Town newsletter. But she put it in the town newsletter, and it just thanked everybody who volunteers and donors that supported summer reading. And she just did such a good job writing it out. It was fantastic to read, being on both sides. So that's fair, sorry, hello. But she just did, shout out Sammy Joe, fantastic, of reaching the community.
Because he's been doing some practicals.
Yes, yeah, it was really. Yes, not babies. That free library is a good thing to do. Yeah, because it's hand drawn, and it was older. All right, moving on to directive report. Oh, circulation, sorry, circulation to refer to.
Right ahead of the first one, are the computers in running and CD, so I want stuff recorded? Yep.
Let's write the shares. No, they're the same. See? Yes, perfect, thank you.
Oh, it's great, Ellen, yeah. You need to read.
Amazing numbers. So the county library does that. They're amazing numbers. This is good big numbers. Any questions on that? Hey, now we're gonna say. Okay, sat down to, well, seeing about it, I was nervous to not talk about this last month. Susan Jean Corte was here in July. While Governor Jean Corte was up at the water tank, she came by here and depreveled came down. And so we were able to talk to her about all of that. So that was a good visit. Our Chota County Community Conversations kicked off last Tuesday with Empower MT coming. We had 20 people that came, Kim was there for part of it. It was, I was nervous about the turnout, but 20 was a good number. Was able to have some good conversation and start to get a good foundation, I feel. So our next program opportunity will be Monday, September 11th at 5:30. And that's going to be our first table talk, table talk one. Everyone's invited to attend. It's not a Fort Benton community conversation, it's the, of the, out, the larger community, community at large. That is going to be pairs of chairs around the library with some guided, guided conversation cards. Top suggestions to have, a time limit for different guidelines. And then we have our first collection development program this past Monday at 5:30. We have two people come for that, but we are going to plan for another one in December. Friends of the Library, on Wednesday after overnight, Carolyn hosted an exploratory Friends of the Library meeting in Fort Benton. And we had 14 people and one person via Zoom. We had, that was the same as the Golden Age Board meeting. So we have some more interest in that. So we are looking to get that on the schedule. And then we had our tax assistance program, informational program yesterday. And I only had one for that, but I have had people reach out to me about getting the training to be able to host the IRS by the site. I have found since I've been here that I feel there is real need for free tax assistance. We get a lot of, what I've seen is a lot of older folks coming in who either don't have technology or don't have the technological knowledge and don't have money to get for tax preparation. They used our program here, then for a while they did a Golden Age. What has happened is Fort Benton's just small enough that they don't want to send anybody in, and it's just far enough away from Great Falls that the travel cost gets too much. And so this is a completely free program. All of the training, we need to have at least two certified volunteers to take the 40-hour training. It's asynchronous online, so you get self-paced. So you have one person that prepares and then a quality assurance person. So I have had people that weren't able to come yesterday that have reached out about that. So I'm really hoping that that's something we can get off the ground. And this would be open to anyone who could come to it when we just for Fort Benton people.
What time is it, is it just like February, March, April?
So when I was talking to Jeannie, it's, we would have it open February 1st to Tax Day. And most likely be one day a week for a block or preferably scheduled visits, but potentially drop in. So I don't know exactly.
Depending how many certified.
Right, and what their, their looks like to, I don't know, it's going to be like an 11 to 3 or a 3 to 7 or something. But to try to, to get that going. And then, yes, I think it's completed, I think it's completed, the outside drainage work, you can see out there. Without a ditch out, the concrete sidewalk replacement's done and the grass seed, that's out. So we'll have to wait till it rains or snows or something to see if that works.
Because you built this yet or?
No. Oh, sorry. It's like, why do I have something wrong? And then announcements, states remember Labor Day. All branches will be closed on Tuesday, September 5th. Winter hours begin in Fort Benton, Geraldine. And then I already talked about the table talk on September 11th. And then on Wednesday, September 13th, Ken Robinson has a new book out, Historic Tales of Fort Benton. And he came in and asked if he could do a book talk. So that would be that Wednesday at 5:30. Okay. On to unfinished business.
We are really fortunate to have a wonderful library system in Chillicothe. We have a diverse county population whose needs we serve. As a publicly funded library, we must serve all of the temps, peers, and counties. We value all of our patrons, and leaving any demographic out is not legal. We have an excellent staff in Fort Benton who administer the system. They are trained, they are experienced, and educated to do their jobs. They serve with integrity, negative that they do, and they serve our patrons well. We have policies in place to cover the challenges of this petition. If a patron signs a book of offensive, they can fill out the reconsideration form for us to review that book. There is also a child protection policy. Children eight years of age and younger must be accompanied by a parent, caregiver, or guardian, or responsible siblings. And then as you come to the library with your children, you'll be able to guide their choices and teach them what's acceptable to your family.
Announcement states, remember Labor Day, um, all branches will be closed on Tuesday, September fifth, winter hours begin in Fort Benton, Geraldine. And then I already talked about the table talk. From on September eleventh and then on Wednesday, September thirteenth. Ken Robinson has a new book out, Historic Tales of Fort Benton, and he came in and asked if he could do a book talk, so that would be that Wednesday at five thirty. Okay, on to unfinished business.
We are really fortunate to have a wonderful library system in Chillicothe. We have a diverse county population whose needs we serve. As a publicly funded library, we must serve all of the temps peers in the county. We value all of our patrons and leaving any demographic out is not legal. We have an excellent staff in Fort Benton who administer the system. They are trained, they are experienced and educated to do their jobs. They serve with integrity. Negative that they do and they serve our patrons well. We have policies in place to cover the challenges of this petition. If a patron finds a book offensive. They can fill out the reconsideration form for us to review that book. There is also a child protection policy. Children eight years of age and younger must be accompanied by a parent. A caregiver or guardian or responsible siblings. And then as you come to the library with your children, you'll be able to guide their choices and teach them what's acceptable to your family. The library is not the purveyor of moral standards in the county. That is a parental responsibility because each family is different. We cannot discriminate by leaving one group out at the request of a different group. That is against current law. As such, I move that as a library board, we reject the petition that's been presented to us.
One second. Hold on, Peter.
I.
All of those.
Good way to meet, and so I took a point. Actually, so in Montana, we're area association. And in it, it talks about our public responsibility. Who's a public? It said, the issue should concentrate on these goals. We need to maintain our budgets. We need to maintain the health of our branches. We need to be present in a presence for the policies and we need to be present for our patrons. So. And the commitment thing is one, to serve the public interest first. Two, to perform your duties openly with the public and three, responsibly. To actively listen to the community.
Yeah, that's a good point. We can kind of go back to before the voting and open up discussion. We're going to have a discussion, open it up to public discussion. So we're having a good discussion on this.
Issues, because before we make the motion, Nick or Tom.
Okay, or between, yeah. And if you want to kind of go over the guidelines first. So after some research, we realized that we can allow the public to comment on action items. Um, but because of so much public comment, we do have a policy.
All right, just some guidelines and some rules. Um, your info becomes public as soon as it is turned in or said per Montana State Code, I know, I know, I know. Thank you. N C A under public records request. A current trustee of the Shota County Library Board of Trustees will serve as mediator. None of us. None of the trustees are professional mediators. There will be mistakes made. Commenters must always be respectful. No interruptions are accepted. Comments must be limited to three minutes. Commenter will be told at the end of their time limit and they will need to stop. Commenters will be, comments will be directed to the board, not other attendees. No clapping or other disrupting noises. Commenters may only speak once during the meeting. And that's good.
And can, I just got a note from somebody, this is of the recording, the video, the audio part is terrible on the Zoom.
Yeah, cause it's on the computer, so.
So there won't be.
We'll have to get, there's a. Something, an animal that we can get. All right, sure, so, okay, so we talk loudly and. Really clearly. Oh, yes, and please state your name before.
Somebody would like to comment, um, there's been a motion that we reject the petition. And I think we'll probably revote a bit after discussion.
Sissy Falcon. Um. I think you should have rejected due to it's not a legal petition. It's a public concern. If you go with this, I agree with you, Janet. The library is responsible for every individual. At this. You also have to follow under federal and state guidelines too. It's not just the regular business, whatever you do, there are federal guidelines that you must follow. And don't know what the issue is that you can't, or it's not being happening. You've had lawyers talk to you, you had Montana. Talk to you, the commissioner, you know, they listened to you, you have his policies. You have your procedures. Lawyers love that. So you have to be fair, civilly. To every human being in Shota County.
Whitney Bonner from Hyland, um. Nancy, can I just say, I really appreciate you, the board finally addressing the petition. I think that's good that we're finally talking about it. Can I suggest that you go through as a board each bullet point or each request on it before you reject the whole thing? Cause there are certain bullet points that ask that books be more properly labeled. Or moved into different sections and you can reject that or you can discuss it and not want to do it, that's fine. But please don't just reject the whole concern as the petition, just please don't reject the whole thing. Um. Please go through each bullet point and maybe say. Now we're going to boot that one or, yeah, maybe we could label these books according to their content. And then I have a, uh, just a short little state statement from somebody. They asked me to read, we're going to write down since I can't speak again. Okay, this message is from Judy yourself. She unfortunately did not be here today as she had, she had little ones that are sick at home. She writes, last month, Mrs. Bridgeman Ray brought copies of the very explicit book Gender Queer. Which my friend Whitney likewise shared in the May meeting and shared, and then. Which is Ray shared a study from Harvard. Speaking about the negative effects of pornography that has on the minds of young children. Two people pointed out that that particular book was shelved in the adult section. So this is Judy talking. So I want to thank the library staff at the Fort Benton Branch. In recognizing that although this book was intended by the author for kids and is even referenced in the Montana. State catalog as young adult literature. You all recognize that the content is in fact adult subject matter. The position of this book brings me great hope that other books. Uh, that in the other books that likewise contain adult matters can be moved, even though the author intended it to be for all kids. Or kids. I kindly asked the board to review the books perhaps through a subcommittee. In which I, Judy speaking, gladly volunteer my time to help research, to ensure that this adult content is categorized accordingly. Thank you for your time.
So I, I think I can respond to that, right?
I would like to also.
Um. So the way we're going, um, over the reconsideration request procedure. And that is a way a committee can be made, Whitney, you've been talking to me, that is a way a committee can be made with your conference. That is the proper like policy to go through is to do the reconsideration form. And we, we have one that we're going to hopefully buckle down and approve today. And then that will be like uniform, because I think that was kind of a problem to be uniform again, or. Across all bridges, so it'd be the same form. And that is the way then you can bring the concerns that you want to the director and then. We will make the, and there's policy on it. We make a subcommittee for that to discuss those particular books.
So per book, not just.
Yes.
Or like this kind of.
Her book, so if you, if gender queer is the one in question, which it sounds like. It's in the right place, which is, it's in the right place. Um, that would be what you'd fill out that form for. And yes, it would be. Per book. What you want to change.
Can I ask you a question about that too?
Well.
Um, just, I was. I don't know if this is something I should bring up later or if I should put this on like a, a form that you were talking about. But the graphic novels upstairs in Nancy and Kim and I have kind of talked about this more like the library. That book is in the graphic novel section, but it's also on the same bookshelf as the young adult fiction. So can we, can I make a request on that form that maybe the graphic novel section is not. In the same bookshelf as the young adult fiction.
You can request, absolutely.
No, it doesn't have to be per book, I can request.
Oh, the whole thing. I mean, I think this is all going to be new to us, so how about your request? And then the committee will do its due diligence, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think that that would work for you guys too, to then it's a little more organized, you guys can. They're headed in the right direction.
Addressing it so we can.
Well, well, that's one thing I want to address, like when you asked us to go point by point, I just want to be totally clear. I would be open to that if every single point not specifically call out LGBTQ. If it had left that off and just said, we don't want violence, we don't want graphic content. But I think this is very much targeted and from the list of books that we've received. They're not all violent, they're not all sexual, but they do all have gay characters. And I think for me as a board member, when it's targeted at a specific group, then. To me, that's why I want to reject petition in its entirety.
Okay.
And then the other thing is I would be amazed if gender queer was targeted towards children by the author. Um, I read it, it took about two hours. I don't know if you and Judy have read it.
It looks through it and.
But it, it's a graphic novel. It takes two hours to read it. I did it one day after dinner, like from my understanding of it, it is a. Gal who prefers not to be gal, it's her life story. I think the panels you guys have pulled were very specifically put in there to keep it out of the children's section. But I'm not sure where Judy would be getting her information, but I do not think it's factually correct that it is target towards children just from the tone of the book.
I would say just check the Montana shared catalog.
Yeah, it was in there.
It was.
As a young adult. And when I asked that, when somebody asked Geraldine, what do you consider a young adult? And Mary answered, and she said, eight years old and up.
But, yes, she does consider a young adult eight years up, but that's totally different than what the Montana catalog likes to say.
No, eight years, no, that's a junior, right? No, juvenile.
Yeah.
So you have, you have, um, children, juvenile, which is all up in this section. And that goes up to eight, no, goes up to twelve, up to twelve, and then twelve to eighteen is your young adults. That's how this library is set up. Is that how Geraldine is set up? Kind of, they don't have as much space. That's how, that's how they don't, so we think that there has been a little bit of, eight is not the number.
Yeah.
Eight is the number on the pronouns, is it? It's there, but it's twelve to eighteen year old.
And that's what Mary was saying.
Okay.
I mean, whatever anybody said at this point, how we run the library, okay. Is, it is eight to twelve year olds for the juvenile, twelve to eighteen, or eight to eleven, twelve to eighteen.
And then adult. So also from my class, I know it has its challenges. Every library board should have a code of ethics. Talk through the scenarios as a board. The board has a legally bestowed power, responsibility and liability regarding the materials in the library. Know your role and speak as one voice.
I don't think that includes discussion, though. I think we've had extensive training that we should be.
No, I'm just saying, this is what was written from the class I took.
But how would you like us to apply it?
No, I would just say when it talks about, we have a legally bestowed power. We have responsibility and liability regarding the materials in the library.
Okay, but.
Just. Just as I read to you.
But what would you like that as an action item for us as a board? Are you just giving up an FYI?
I'm just giving you, this is what I took from this meeting, okay? Which tells us that we do need to be responsible and we do need to be responsible for our young adults.
Well, I think that's the debate is that are we responsible for just the straight young adults? Or are we responsible for all the young adults, including the gender?
Yeah.
Historic, including the gay, including everyone. And I think at least two of us view that we are responsible for all youth in the county, even the dozen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty kids. Who consider themselves LGBTQ.
And that's in one part of the petition.
But that's in our hearts. Like to be dramatic.
Okay.
Uh, all the kids.
I feel the same way and I also feel as an adult, I'm her's grandparent. And I feel it's our responsibility. For goodness be safe for the children. And as a parent, I told children up to eighteen for that matter. My kids were my responsibility until, you know, so I feel the same way. But would anybody else like to say anything?
Well, Lori Reddick, um, just that Nancy, what you read is just spot on to me. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Tim Wood, I'm going to try to make me some notes as we go, because the conversation shifted. Um, the first thing I want to emphasize is what was said from up here and over here. That part of what we have to start from is that. This institution, library district, is here for all of our citizens. We all pay for this district. We're all serviced by it. Everyone needs to feel included. Um, so it speaks to what you were saying about how we've got this completion of issues between. The characters that are in them, in the books and these other issues. We've got a reconsideration policy on the table, I think. Unless I'm missing something, that's a way to handle all the concerns that are raised. So we've got a request to move a section of boys. So it's not next to young adults and there's openness to doing so. So it appears to me that we've got a policy in place that will handle the, the brunt of the concerns. Um, one concern I have with, with the way the issues have been mixed. Is when we talk about people who are LGBTQ, whether it's in the books or not. That's not the same thing as issues of violence. I, as a parent and maybe sooner grandparent, have serious issues with violence. At my churches, we're praying about the war in Ukraine, directed. Because that's violence being inflicted on people that did not have a choice. I don't want to see our kids have violence inflicted on them, but that is a separate issue for human sexuality. They're, they are not linked. Um, the. The related issues. Give me repeated pause, because we got, we have taught, at least one board member and members of the community about things being safe. And again, I agree with that, but having books that speak to LGBT characters and issues. Is not a safety concern. That's speaking to the lives of people who are part of our community. People that each of us know, people that each of us love, wherever we stand on this issue. So I would greatly appreciate going forward if we can. Stop entangling the safety of the violence with the issues of LGBTQ. Um, thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, rather than just. Going to reject the petition or whatever you said. I think we should table it maybe and get together and have some reconsider and talk about it. I don't think we've ever even approached it as a board. And rather than just rejecting both of the bullets, maybe we can press and climb the ground, and that's what I would. That's what I'd like to see.
I feel like we've not talked about it amongst ourselves.
Are you asking with the petition?
Oh, whoever would be on a committee, who the recon, maybe the reconsideration, the books, grab them. Whatever they're doing, put together, you said you have a committee that made up.
Yes, we would send it up. Yes, the reconsideration form is not. No, it's not all board members, it's a community member and a librarian. Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see that and, um, I just feel that rejection of it is very.
Feel after four months, I think we're kind of at a stalemate where at least two feel pretty strongly that it's. I think our existing policies are a better fit, where individual books rather than whole subgenres. But.
Or mental, we should do something.
Yeah.
So are there, will we need to reconfigure the big Sandy library then also, because their young adult section is. Right after adult section, is that something that I'm just trying to turn about? I think there are ways for our policies to come in and change what.
Right, well, I'm, so I'm saying, like, if that is going to be on the table for here, is it also going to be?
I think that's where we have a committee, right, and making a dress. I mean, maybe, I mean, yeah, I would, I would make sure of.
We're not just talking about this building.
Right, we're, this is, we work as a, somehow, right, so I think that, yes.
Oh, I'm, did I mistake, I'm sorry, Jen. What do you think, Non, about the layout of the Big Sandy Library?
I, I haven't, I, I don't go up and down the aisles and then see where it's all at, I don't do that. And I know where she has the heart stoppers, um, I don't know, also. I'm down here, enough, I can look it up, I can check, okay, you want me to?
I do, I, I know, that's the way it's like.
Okay, so you want them moved?
No, I'm not saying, no, that's definitely, no, no. If it comes in to where we're moving a section here, since we are a system.
Yep.
We would move it in all, in location.
Yep.
Yep, because we're a team.
Yeah.
Together, forever.
If you have another response?
If you get another one over here.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Request, I know at one point, the names on the petition have not accompanied the petition, has that? Has that changed, or, or this?
Yes.
The signatures are a matter of record.
Yes, they're public record.
And may I note that there's two hundred and seventy-five plus signatures on the petition.
There have been signatures that have been requested to be.
Yes, there have been signatures requested, because they've been approached. And told that the signatures would leave to a legal matter.
Yes.
Rick Cooks. I live here in Fort Benton, a lot of you probably know me, I'm the clerk of court, I'm the county superintendent of schools. And it pains me greatly that I'm here to address you today, I gotta say that. First and foremost, I would suggest that that petition is presented without pass legal muster. And if you think that there aren't attorneys out there watching this very closely, you're misleading yourself, I know that personally. And I'm not just talking about the attorney that wrote the letter. First and foremost, we have to follow the laws, both federal and state, they trump library boards, I'm sorry, that's just a fact. And if, if this is where, I'm, I'm gonna try to keep this short, because I'm pretty worked up, I'll just be very honest, um. And I would like to refer back to a letter to the editor that Ms. Yersa wrote. And it was a really long one, probably a month, month and a half ago, and the thing that jumped out to me. Was the statement that she said, we just want to parent our kids. Well, I think that that's what the, the library board and the, more importantly, the staff would like you to do. And, but as it appears based upon this action, you're asking them to parent your kids. You're, you know, you control your kids, they're not the babysitters. But, but most importantly, I think that as a public group. You better be, seriously, I would suggest you talk to an attorney before you go much further. Or I think you're gonna be inviting a lot of trouble, that the library certainly doesn't need, and the community does not need to be further divided. Thank you.
You've been consultant Steve, he said this was a letter per se, and it was addressed to the county commissioners. And to the library board, that he did not feel that it was a legal matter.
I'm talking about the petition, Janet, and I've talked to Steve as well.
That's what we used to say.
I don't remember him saying.
That's, that's not how he shared that with me, I can guarantee you that.
It is the only thing, because we have one group. And that's discrimination, they've studied a lot. And if, if we approve it, we are given, and we cannot prove it. We just can't.
And I think it's a huge legal issue also, that the beginning preamble of petition specifically says, do not fill out the forms. It doesn't give an explanation, other than you will be a legal issue if you fill out the forms, which is our policy. But I think that's also.
Policy going forward.
It's always been a policy.
We have had it, it just got confusing, because we had different versions of it, we weren't. We weren't as prepared as we should have been, we should have been prepared.
But even then, I think it would have been a policy too, if there's one book, and I think. That's another reason that it's not legally sound to pursue it. Think we have policies in place that the, that Whitney and the other people are concerned can go through, and then they can. Possibly see some of the changes they want, but also we will be legally protected as a county system.
You will procedure.
Yes.
Yes. I'm Janet Jordan, Janet King, I grew up in, in Geraldine, and my mother came to the library about every day here. She took us to Great Falls when we were little kids. She set us loose, we went and found what we wanted to read. It was okay, uh, I don't know what you're so scared about a book, a book does not make a person gay. Reading about gayness does not make you gay. So I just believe that if you don't want your children to read a book, don't let them check that book out. Everybody has their own view, don't take a book away from my family. Or put it somewhere where my child can't see it, just because you're uncomfortable.
Yes.
Like Tracy Cook of the Montana still library. And we have a demand, but maybe since, I think it feels like reject is very harsh, right? And you want to have a conversation, so what about considering a motion? To recommend that the people who filed the petition complete the form, and then meet with the board to discuss their concerns. So you're basically saying you're moving to, that you would respond to the petition with requests that they follow the process outlined in law. And then you would respond to it that way, maybe that would be.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, yes, yeah, yes.
Do you think either one of you would be comfortable making that motion?
What she said.
And so, let's go to this, so the committee will consist of the chair of the board. One other trustee, the library director, one community library professional, and one community member at law.
So that's just a, that's after the re, the request.
Right.
I know, we're not, that is after the request for reconsideration and procedure had then filled out, so we could. What Tracy said, which was a very wise knowledge, um, could do that. Then we're not rejecting, but we're not approving anything, which I know, guys, I know we're going, I apologize, but we need to do it all right.
I'm, I think, um, please, talk to me if I say it wrong, but I make a motion. To reject this, I make a motion to encourage the authors of the petition and the signers of the document of the petition. To follow existing policy, and the board will form a committee to meet with citizens of the community about their concerns regarding this issue.
I just have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
And I think legally, and also the way it words out, we have to meet with both sides.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. All right. On the policy. Okay, so top one should be your request for reconsideration procedure. Yay. So it is. It explains it all out, we have so good crossed out things on here, so that is what we took out. As the, when I say we, clarification, the um, policy committee, which consists of Janet, myself, and Emily. Um, we got to talk over some of these policies, and so what has changed is. Crossed out. And it is to one page, besides the instructions, right, so the form itself. Is a one.
It's a little bit too separate, so.
Well, this one, right, policies, like being, without, but then we're sort of, the answer, yes. Yeah, great, okay, all right.
If you guys think you, you, the committee's went through it, and.
What would you read?
Not a whole thing.
Can I ask you, why did you take out in the absence of a fully completed form?
I just really want to meet everybody in the middle, Nancy, that's all I want to do. The committee can ask for more questions if they need more questions, but I feel like it was very harsh to say. I'm not even gonna look at it if you don't initial everything, you know what I mean, I just, these are patrons.
I feel like it could be a middle ground. Because I, I, I'm worried that we get in a system where it's like no copies, so you just write the books. They haven't turned in.
Well, I think at that point, then the person who writes it needs to contact and be like, okay, well, this isn't sufficient. We need some more guts than that.
You just say it's not suggestion.
I just said, like, I don't.
But if they don't put contact information, is that a legal issue?
Yeah, but this, but that's what this pays for.
Right, but if they decide that's with their contract issue.
If they don't complete it, we're still legally.
I just have too much faith in humanity.
No, but you don't want it, it's legal stuff, yeah, there's just legal issues, but. But yeah, you're caught, your idea is just to make it clear that we're not gonna throw it out the door, like, like the Irish might.
I want, exactly, I want it to be personal, we are a small community, we can, we can have personal touches.
Yes.
In my opinion, I don't know, I, it doesn't make it so harsh.
What if we replace that with small emissions will be allowed, but. They will not be accepted if large portions of the form are left blank.
If you have small emissions.
Let me, let me go second, like.
Like, we're the contact.
Yeah.
Breakup, we don't have contact information, if we get one filled out and twenty five.
Doesn't have any contact information, can't do anything about it.
Other than it says, we will take it into account, even if you don't fill it out, like, to me, it's just, it's a legal trap, like, it's not a good policy, because it leaves a track. Does that make sense?
Where's the question?
I'm underposing.
Very.
The last sentence.
The next page.
First, that.
So they had us.
Yeah, she's saying, what she's saying is if it, if there's no contact information.
Yeah, well, evidently, yeah, that's, that's, that's where you open it.
Okay, so as you read it, you don't think that would get us in legal trouble?
Well, let's just reword it a little bit, right, okay, so. Can we say contact information not be filled out in full?
Yes, I'm wondering if you just put in the absence of a completely, I mean, it's like, is it fully, is that the one?
I would say, I would say, in the absence of, of this page.
Uh, yeah, but what I'm saying is, I don't want them to feel like they have to answer everything and paragraphs on this page.
So what if we just say instead, there, there is no, what we said, there may, or something like, the. The committee reserves right to reject, because like you said, there's faith on our side too. Like, we will absolutely look at it if they just miss the checkbox, what if we get one filled out more?
Yeah, yeah. That obviously we're listening.
Yes, but if we get, if we get one filled out form, and then twenty more with just the name of the book on, we reserve the right to reject those, does that make sense?
So every, every book has to be put down on here, correct, is that what you're saying?
No, one book at a time.
Yeah, so.
And each person.
Fill out this whole page, well, that's pretty obvious.
I'm sorry, I think it's terribly obvious, I know, so I'm taking that as a cross that line, if it says in the absence of a fully completed form. Be, I'm not sure if it's the committee, the committee reserves the right to not take action.
To request more info.
Okay, that makes sense in that way, yes.
And then we have a conversation, the whole point is to have a conversation.
Yeah, yes.
So in the absence of a fully completed form, the committee. Reserves the right. To request more information.
Yes, does that sound good, Tim?
Yes, I think that.
Feel good, does that feel good, ladies?
Yep. We reserve the right for more information, so do the request, one, one request, or any reserves the right to request more information. Yep. I move we.
Yeah, no, I think you can go ahead.
I don't think I need to ask, that we accept this request of consideration procedure with the changes.
Right, I did offer say. Whatever it is, like, this is gonna be that.
So if we all agree, for the first reading, if we all agree. We can pass it.
Yes.
And we're just gonna do one of the type of, is that correct?
Please. Mr. Crosses, then would you, I think it's been a duty to reading there.
No, I'm not sure this one, it's this one.
I feel like we've read them all, but we're kind of starting to do.
I think we do that, but there's a lot of changes.
I think if, I think you have a lot of changes, or if somebody doesn't agree.
Right. Then we go and. Done that, we've adopted on first reading, if it's, you know, like the, the subtext, or you know, there's a paragraph, like a small.
Go for it, that's been your process, just follow your process.
And let's just do the request for the reconsideration procedure, it's the only one we're doing.
Okay, so none of those to adopt, except, well, that's where, is it a doctor, except that's, right? I think I know, I'm asking.
Except with changes.
Okay, whatever, you better link that.
Adoption policy.
Well, with.
Pretty fancy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Policy with changes. There you go.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
I would just say I am voting for it, because I think it helps the sound is a lot, but. But I do still believe that as patrons, we're responsible to actively listen to, as. Trustees, we are responsible to actively listen to our patrons.
And that's your vote?
Okay, so this is adopted.
Adopted, so now you're gonna go on to, then, for reconsideration of, a citizen's request, excuse me. For reconsideration of library material, so that is the, the form that we would ask them to fill out.
So, for example, I have, for example, if someone doesn't have an email address, just because they don't put the email address on this.
Rejective, right, right, like, right.
Example.
Yes.
But I think they get all.
If they don't answer any of the questions, besides that they, like, fill out this information, they put the author and the title. And the publisher, but then they don't, the rest of them, then the committee can say.
Yeah.
I just want, I think, no, no, it's great, I appreciate it, I love it.
Do you, do you think we need like other in the type of material, are you guys seeing like new stuff, or is it? Okay, that's been pretty stable for. Oh, wow.
I move, uh, that we accept this is request for reconsideration of library material, original copy, uh, yes.
Can I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? All opposed, same side? Alright. Instructions to the review committee. So then form has been filled out. This is the next step. If the committee. Gets chosen.
Change a lot of this?
Language and. To be honest, cause nothing's brought out.
We've got A O B. Is.
Oh.
That's the only difference.
Yeah.
But in general, this. I can do that. And stuff. Is that stuff?
So. According to the request for reconsideration procedure, the first step. You fill out the form, right? This is no, 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 just talks of library or, yes, citizens concerned about the library will be bridge as library director. Who will attempt to resolve the concern informally. Obviously, that's the best. I mean, we want it resolved informally if we can at any time.
Do we have that in this paper?
Yeah, we just. That doesn't mean this is the ideal. Let's do it this way. First. We can always.
Well, you were talking about making it personal in terms of that as a small community and it's like, you know, we don't have to find one ready to do something that would.
And I think, I think you've had that a lot where informally people come up and say this was in a children's section. I think maybe it should be here and you're like, oh yeah, that's true. Thank you. Yeah. Or this is in the adult section. This is. This is probably.
That is not seen.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I read this. Yep. So here's the committee, they meet with the person, they, then they present a report as the next board meeting. Then the board acts.
Oh, I choose about that.
It's the number, the highlight number five. So it says the review committee will prepare a report of the committee's recommendations and voting record to present to the chair of the board of trustees and also to inform the citizen. Then in parentheses, this is my question. Um it doesn't make sense to me to present the results to the chair of the board trustees if the chairperson is on the committee. So maybe it should say, the review committee will prepare a report of the committee's recommendations and vote records to present to the complaint. Or to the, or, I, does that make sense? So like if the chair, if you are the board chair and you are therefore on the.
redoing.
Committee.
Yeah.
Then why would you prepare a report to present to yourself? That's my question.
I might be a sure. Okay. But I'm not saying that.
That's a really.
The chair is always in the community.
Exactly.
Hot, so.
But does.
So that doesn't change it, cause it's in our bylaws.
Right, so that doesn't make sense, right? You're really much, you mean, yeah. Yeah, so we should just be able to take that out, right? The italic.
Yeah, or have it say the review committee will prepare a report of the committee's recommendations and voting record to.
Oh, that's what you're adding. So this is.
That wasn't already in there.
No.
Okay, this part is what you, like, is what we.
It, yeah.
Is that. That would be one example.
You're right.
Yeah.
Cause there's no follow up with the complaint.
Will she be tabled this one or?
No, we're just gonna sort of the way through.
Yeah, this is just one side, like I think, cause basically we're just gonna cross out.
I'm sure you just.
Um voting record to present. We're gonna cross out the chair of the board of trustees. So the review committee will prepare a report of the committee's recommendations and voting record to present. Or, yeah, to present to the citizen. Like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll leave out board of trustees, leaving that out.
Man, chair.
So cross out the chair of the board of trustees.
Okay.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. That wouldn't be like extra. Work.
Yeah. Since you already know your report.
Right.
So then it says that the review committee will. I wasn't in the. Chair. And then the chair will go back to the review committee.
Great. Yeah.
No, it says after your report, you take action and then you report to the board at the next.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. He goes after them.
Make a motion to adopt instructions to the review committee as amended.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Alright, code of conduct. Policies.
Haven't we had this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have.
Ready to move? Ready to. Questions, this, this, let me decide this. This, I guess, was also done. Or.
So to choose that, right, just to. Keep it. Yeah, I think. You want bring that, yeah, cause I think this is a good one, just to laminate. And put around.
Put it back.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we just.
Yes, I, I move that we accept the code of conduct policy.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same time. So. Okay, it's on the, okay, yeah, sorry.
We're not.
No, I'm moving on.
Okay, so can we, so in the rules, we have already been made that one change, so. But there is a change about on the second page.
Oh, yeah, there is. Two pages.
Yeah, you got the other page on.
It is.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say eight year olds instead of just younger, it. Left it open.
Give it a numbers.
Give it a number. We already have a number. We picked a number. Yeah, that's always.
Okay.
So maybe I just have a question, then it's a viewing of obscene materials in a disruptive manner is not permitted.
Yep. What's your question?
So what you, I would say. Viewing of obscene materials on a library computer. Is not permitted. Whether it makes it disruptive or not.
I don't know if you know if people are viewing obscene material in the state.
Well, one minute.
Yes.
And uh, she know. Was actually a patron did. Look at obscene materials. Okay, what different are the thing? And what happened was they took the, all of the computers from the library.
Who's they?
The police or whoever was in charge. And they never gotten back.
Is there a guideline, right? I mean, is there something you do?
Well, I think.
It's a legal term.
So I just, I don't understand whether viewing of obscene material is not permitted. I don't think where we should talk about.
So you just wanna cross off in the.
Yeah.
Okay. Viewing is, you know, oh, so viewing of obscene materials.
Period.
Is not permitted.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a scene like a, it's this theme. Like we just had a huge four month long thing over what people consider obscene and some of their books obscene, so.
Um, no, this is.
I think that was why.
This is by law, but it's obscene. I just did a whole this morning, what do you mean it's by law? I mean.
When you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Adrian Miller. I'm on Zoom. I just wanted to point out what I think you already have said, which is. The term obscene has very specific legal connotations. So if you're gonna use that term. I would suggest you say obscene as defined by law.
Thank you. Thank you. I would say that too.
That's all I'm trying to see.
By my law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Materials as defined by law.
Okay, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wood just pointed out that obscenity legally is a category of speech unprotected by the First Amendment. And then I think it generally, there's much debate over what falls into that, but yes, okay.
And that's all for my state.
Can we ready your motion?
Yeah.
Pardon? Yes, I move that we, I make a motion to accept the boys of behavior with a little correction down here.
One more second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Copyright policy.
We want, I vote we accept the copyright policy as stated on this little piece of paper.
On second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
What have we on this thing?
Yeah, Shoto County Library of Policies in brief, Vicente Forbit and Jolene Highway.
And, and we've had this all.
I just.
Question.
We have, yeah.
Yes.
Then, yeah. I think I just have a question.
Perfect.
No, I mean, my question wanting to answer. You wanna read it?
I've read it. Yeah, I mean, I mean, if this is the same one we've had like for. Few months, right? Okay. Are we ready? I move, I make a motion to accept the Shoto County Library's policies in brief. As it's written.
Yeah.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Cooperation with other libraries. And the only thing we changed was we took off the American Library Association to follow. Montana State Library.
Make motion to accept cooperation with other libraries. That's written. One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? I have this down, then you'll end it. Alright. That, well, I guess we can read to it. I just. Put that up.
Yeah.
Um, no, we can have a first reading. Let's have a first.
Doesn't need to go in the policy, can it? Did you guys already do it?
We, yeah.
Okay.
For the most part, there were some changes.
Nice.
Cause they changed them and there's still might be more changes. So I really do want you to, the.
Can we take it home?
Look at that, yes, please. Also be our first reading.
Okay. Able.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's not how I go first. I just, cause I know that was some confusion. So you're gonna have it stable. That's just sounding as a first reading.
Yes.
Okay. Is there something you would change?
I don't know. I'll have a little bit that we're supposed, they're supposed to.
Okay.
Yeah, did I not put that on there? Yeah. So tell me where you wanna meet it. Where would you like them? So basically. It could be commit. Commenters. Uh, will escape their name and be with by all and no other names.
Commenters, the mentors that were.
I do. Yes, I.
Spell check.
No, I.
Yeah, you did.
Yes.
Commenters. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm a millennial. Spell check doesn't do anything.
Oh, I, can we talk about what we talked about in our emails this morning about number three? Janet, haven't she read, I think she brought it. Three down, way down here.
The board and staff will not be reading any letters from people that cannot make it.
But I like what Janet emailed this morning.
Did she also read that one instead? Is that what you're telling me?
Oh, yeah. Kind of, I don't remember. It's just, it's a.
There's probably a nicer way to put it.
Yeah. So members of the public who wish to share their own written comment or pertinent visual matters. Have a limit to address the library board for three minutes. The board chair has the right to limit public comment if they are not germane to the proceedings. The public comment should be encouraged by the commenter themselves, and as such, they're limited to three minutes or they can be sent by email at any time. State uh MCA Title Two, Chapter Three, Part Two states that they should share written comments in a written public comment no later than twenty four hours before the start of the meeting. So that's.
So that was just to the MCA.
Right, and that sounds better than what I.
So you're gonna add that to. Yes, but people can read, can, can read just like what you did last night, but it's still a three minute limit. Okay, so you can't bring in like eight letters.
So you will add this for next time.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah. To a stable.
With, with.
Correct. First reading, so then the corrections will come with us next.
Yeah.
Meeting and I'm gonna need a second read.
Alright, okay.
Right, we are moving.
Right, right. I'm leaving a quarter inch. Okay.
Alright, so this. The book for this record.
Cause I was. Yeah. Of course, he does that.
Yeah. Right, right, but she needs to not be able to move D to T and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have that. Stop before she left, sorry.
Okay, that's.
Is it a big update?
It's an update. But I forgot from the papers.
But, yeah.
So I'll wait for.
Yeah, yeah. Um, picture a joke about my two year old. Tell me on that. And I think it's adorable, cause he's adorable, so I will try to do my best to buy it. Um, so his new one is, why does the chicken cross the road? Sorry.
That's good, I like it.
Yeah.
Think you gotta be principal?
No, not even. Only gonna be three and one, not even one.
Bye.
Um. Hello, man.
Can, I'd like to, I'd like to move it around. In the third of the gutter, the gutter's name, please.
Oh, sorry, that's fine.
Okay, um, I did leave the papers home and I apologize. Um, not the gutter, but the doors. We are ordering new mechanisms, cause. The guy came and filled with them and they, mechanisms are not right and I have a bill and I. Uh. Three thousand, fifty hundred a piece around in there, but I can send it to you. And then the gutters. Uh, we have another man in town who we're gonna get together and talk about whether we need to cut out. The cement or what we need to do. So that's still. Um. Not done yet, okay?
You need two mechanisms, right?
Two mechanisms, yeah, and, and I have that paper and I can email it for what I wanna do. I just spaced it out this. I just spaced it out this morning. Cause, cause, yeah.
You're really want somebody in examining.
It was, it was Mr. Randy, Randy, that it was the contractor before, yeah, and he's, he's, he, he was there, and he touched it, and the mechanism just kind of, you know, so he's, he just figures rather new doors, he's getting two new mechanisms, and, and they're from a different company than the, the, originally, and
That's a good one.
I can't, I can't remember much it cost, they're, they're not like ten bucks, they're like a few hundred a piece or something.
And, and you're gonna nail some of your other gutters, is that what?
Yes, we're gonna talk about the gutters versus the sidewalk with the gutter thing, and figure it out.
Okay.
We're gonna have, there's, there's a couple, there's about three men coming that understand that stuff, and then Darlene will be going to forever build it. And we'll, I'll try and get it done before next meeting, because it is getting into winter soon, maybe someday.
Good job. But we don't end with your.
No, no, yeah, well, yeah. But I know you've asked, and, and, and they're not, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Now, book for you, perfect.
So there.
Um, I don't know. I went through all of our, all of where I order book from, so the five or six different places, plus any, um, emails that have receipts, like about three or four things. And I printed all of those off, um, first, the printer I used had weird margins, so. Been stolen, because why would they? Oh, but fortunately, when I broke that printer printing off everything, and we got a new printer, um, that is able to print the full thing, um. Do you know about this? You wanna know, this is not the last few years?
No.
What was that?
So is the, are they here? So look at, is that?
They are upstairs.
They're upstairs, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to think.
Yeah.
Since we printed them.
That's.
They're available, so look at. Current year, should anyone be interested, um. Yep, some of them have notes, and most of them just.
This is book list for all three?
Yes.
Okay.
Or is that out of our control?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it was, you know. Yeah.
I don't think we've anything.
Yeah. But yeah, they're available, if not, happens, okay.
How many pages are there? Or. One fifty pages.
So. Or you think they can come in, or they can look at them, but they're, it would be weird to like be able to make them part of our system. Like, people can check them out.
Oh, check out the book, find her with the books.
I know.
Good, there'd be damage to policy. Yeah, throw people for the people that.
And that was just an idea, I'm just, idea, they could also just look on the shelves and see what we've ordered, because that's exactly. But I'm not hiding anything.
It's where you find her.
That's where you'll find them, if they, we get them, and we realize that, oh, that was not purchased, then we'll see that, and we'll back, we've done that too.
We didn't even know.
Ken, you, you've seen the book, that, the person that we, like, oh, nope, nope.
Like, yep.
No, that will not, that's not without, so. Yeah, but there's, yeah, any discrepancies in my plan. That's everything, thank you for.
Emily, do you have a preference, if anyone wants to go talk about the list, did they talk to you, right, they talked to Mary?
Let her, just to request.
If you have it upstairs, yeah.
Like, this was up there.
Yeah. So if anyone wants to look at the book list, it should be upstairs.
Yep.
Both Mary and I were bursting it, and.
True.
Well, Mary is super happy to talk about.
I mean, I it happens.
Yes.
Like, like being back at college.
Now, we're.
Alright, well, that's. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Lauren Reynolds.
Jim.
Janet's.
Oh, right.
So. So the board has asked a couple of times by insurance citizen about representing Fort Ben. Speaks on this, when I was asked to join the library board by Debbie Wellman, I did not realize that I was to represent Big Sandy, since I live the furthest away from Big Sandy, and just not even a quarter of a mile into, uh, the district. So when we place him wrong, we used our bylaws, but we shaped the board, but puts together a list, votes on the candidates, and then the commissioners choose the representatives. The reason the commissioners have the last say is because they control the ball. So, um, Emily performed a foreigner request, and received interest from others within the county. We wanted to correct requirements in the public, so Kim wrote to Tracy at the Montana State Library. I've asked Tracy permission to read her letter. There are very good ways that libraries have a board representation, I reached out to Emily to double-check my memory of my conversation. I couldn't remember if your bylaws said anything about representation. Some libraries have the requirement, especially county libraries, where they're trying to make sure the main county is represented by the library board. When Emily and I spoke, she said historically that you have representation from the cities with branches and one at-large representative. I told her that keeping the same format is not a requirement, but that ensures the entire county has representation and follows a protocol that has been used for many years. It can be challenging to maintain that representation, because people don't always live in the city limits. However, it is best to have board members frequent who live and do business in a town or area. It brings a perspective and experience that lets them be the most voice of their community. Because I did not fit into the guidelines, I told the board that I would resign, so someone from the Big Sandy could be appointed. I'm a transplant who married her college sweetheart, and we do live in the Loma area. When the commissioners received the names, they called him over to the courthouse to let her know that they had chosen Nona. Then Commissioner Darlington called me at home and said that if, that I did not need to resign, but rather become the at-large representative, and Kim would become the Fort Ben representative. So it'd be a large stretch for me to be the Fort Ben representative, as I don't, I'm not even, I don't vote in this district, okay? So Kim works in Fort Ben, she graduated from Fort Ben, and her children go to school here. I therefore make a motion for Kim to represent Fort Ben. Do I have a second from the board, miss motion?
We can discuss. We can do it after this, I think. My second. Um. I guess I'm not aware of you and Darlington talking about stuff, but when I.
To you more than, I told them more than once.
Yeah, I always thought I represented Carter, because I took over from Alfred Carter, which is where I live.
Okay, so what I left out of this is Ron Young was a representative for Fort Ben, and served on the board fourteen years. Of that eleven years, he did not even live in this county. He lives outside of Cascade, in Cascade County. I live five miles from Loma, and there is no branch library in Loma. Kim lives outside of Carter, and there's no branch library there, and Nancy represents Highwood, but her address is Shonka, which neither town has a branch library. So in this format, it does say that you have represented from cities with branches and one at-large. With this time, have two branches.
I think the main conflict we've had on the board is, at this point, both you and Nona kind of represent Big Sandy.
I, well, that's where, where I did, and you know, I did say I would resign, so that Big Sandy could have a representative, represent Big Sandy, because at the time, I did not know that I was chosen, because I was the furthest from Big Sandy. They were having a conflict as they built the Big Sandy library. So, but anyway, so I did ask that I would resign, so that somebody from the, I never had to do that, because the commissioners, including Commissioner Darlington, they need that choice, and they told me they called you to come over to the courthouse to talk to them, correct?
They did, they just let me know that they were going to not appoint our recommended person, and so they wanted to appoint Nona, because they all knew Nona. And I said, well, I don't, so if you think she's a good candidate, but, um, I don't know if the commissioners decide who resigns or not. I got the impression that.
Resign from the board, you order for the board, you have someone.
Right.
But when Commissioner Darlington called me at home, he said, you have the experience, we don't want you to resign. We would rather let you stay in place. Now, the only thing I'm saying, I do not represent Fort Ben, okay? Oh, okay, I don't.
Would, yes.
But you do, you have a business here. You actually graduated from Fort Ben, and you also have children that go to school here, that's all I'm saying. According to, it says, it's best to have board members frequent who live and do business in a town or area. It brings a perspective and experience that lets them be a voice for the community.
So Tracy, can I weigh in on this, I think personality aside, is there a legal issue with a person switching which district they represent midterm? Or does that depend on our bylaws?
To go re-read your bylaws.
Okay.
But I do, I think it might be helpful for the board to decide who represents what area, and to write that down, and then going forward, just make sure you're always trying to fill the representative from the area that the person is touching on, but let me go look at your bylaws, just to look.
Have you seen how it plays out in other libraries when it's out of our hands, when the commissioners? Because I think part of why we're unbalanced is the commissioners chose representative that's for an area that's already represented.
Yeah, so this actually came up in another library, and they ended up renegotiating their agreements, um, where they said we would attempt to get, uh, a representative from the town, and if that was not possible, then the city council would appoint someone who lived in the district of the library. So I think it would be good to sit down with the commissioners and kind of point out that you have this representation, and you would like to preserve it, and, and, and be able to show them, these are the individuals who currently represent these areas. And going forward, we would kind of respectfully request that we continue to follow this, so that all of the counties represent that. You're gonna, you're right, it's in the hands of commissioners, the law gives them that authority, so I think you do need to work with them, to just kind of clarify that you would like this. Um, if you wanted it, you could choo-, you could choose to take it back and change it.
For our bylaws?
Yeah, you can just say that you have to be a resident of Shoto County, or not.
Okay.
But I do think since it goes to the commissioners, you need them.
I, yeah. Okay. Ken, I'm gonna be totally honest, it feels like your motion is more of a personal conflict between us, I don't see the legal ramifications of having a layship on who represents Fort Ben. That's, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I just said, don't interrupt.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to balance the board. It doesn't, you're right, Kim, there should not be two representatives from Big Sandy. Okay, you're correct, so here I am in Loma, wouldn't you consider that I am furthest away from Big Sandy, in miles? You were closer to Fort Ben miles.
I think.
You also have a business here, or you work here, your children go to school here, and you graduated from here. I don't meet any of those requirements, or any of that requirement, part of it, so I don't see why you wouldn't want to represent Fort Ben.
Well, I think you're diverting from the main issue, which is that we have unbalanced representation, and that there's two people who hearts really reside in Big Sandy, because I've witnessed you. I guess I haven't witnessed you, but I've always spoken to you, Janet, and you always seem to have the best interests of Big Sandy, and they always seem to claim that as your base branch. I believe you've even gone to events and introduced yourself as a Big Sandy rep, I really think that you advocate most strongly for Big Sandy.
And so may I explain why that happened? So when we're at meetings, we go around and we introduce ourselves, okay, let's say we started with Nona. Okay, so when I introduced myself, I do say I'm part of the Big Sandy area, because I made a ma-, a major mistake when I introduced, when the new library was built in Big Sandy, and, um, Sandra was the director at the time, and I stood up and did this whole thing about the Big Sandy library. I took that away from the director, she was the one that should have been doing that. So the last two times I've done it, it was because I spoke before Emily spoke. I wanted to make sure that she was able to give credit from what things work in her, in, in the library system, and that's why I did it. I did it at two times, I know I did, it was not at any meeting you were at. Okay, so I don't see how you know this information, but I did, and that was only to give credit to Emily, so that she could talk about her community.
Okay, but I mean, you said repeatedly that you don't really align with Fort Ben at all.
I'm not saying I don't mind with Fort Ben.
I thought you just discussed that you live far from Fort Ben.
No, I said, my, okay, Kim, can we go back?
Sure.
Okay. I live further from Big Sandy, and I have to vote for the things in Big Sandy, I don't get to vote for your hospital, I don't get to vote for all those things. That's why I'm saying, you are more of a representative than I am because of where you are.
I guess I don't understand why this is important to you.
Well, it's you just said, I mean, since it, could you not ask? May I put you on the spot? You were the concern to this end.
Oh, you're gonna.
I don't mention. That's fine. Uh, look, can I ask you a question before I answer that question, Ken? So explain to me what at the, at-large person does.
In our, I, well, I have it in my, in our board. The at-large says, they represent the city or branches, the at-large is to fill in the difference. So I feel, I fill in the difference between Big Sandy, that all from that difference to Fort Ben, but also, this is confusing, because like I said, you were the, I mean, you don't have a library in Carter, okay? I don't have a library in Loma, okay? You don't have a library in either Highwood or Shonka.
Well, there is kind of a library in Highwood, we just don't know the status.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it works there, we're working, yeah.
So when Mr. Darlington had that conversation with you about the at-large, did he let the board know?
I don't know, I, I mean, like I said.
So I, if it was me, I would table this until Mr. Darlington, or the commissioners, if there was a. I think the commissioners, what I'm understanding, please correct me, because I can be wrong, do they appoint the boards?
Yes.
So if it was me, it's just a suggestion, I would get the commissioners to handle the situation.
And I think they did, because they pointed.
Well, I know, but did they let the board know, they, they appointed this Nona, and that because they pointed that you were the at-large, did the commissioners let the whole board know that? So I think the issue, I'm not saying that you're mistaken or anything, don't get me wrong, that I'm saying that. I'm saying the only people that can straighten this out at this moment are the commissioners, now if the commissioners vote you, and they're the ones that do that, then you have your answer.
Okay, that's fine. So what could you say, Tracy, that maybe it's a board decision?
Oh, I, I think it'd be very. Well, I I think it'd be very helpful to ask the commissioners, are they aware that you try to do this with representation? They may be unaware. Um so I think it just needs to be a conversation with the commissioners.
Would we need, could we meet as with the commissioners, three of us as a core, or would you need the committee to take or just a call?
Well, I I found that my recommendation would be Danny in chair, even if we're into this, so talk to the commissioners, take Emily and say. Are you aware we have this? It's becoming a bit of an issue and um. Our understanding going forward is here's the representation and would you agree with?
And why don't you want to represent?
Because I think you are up to something, Janet, not to be rude, but I'm not following your logic at all.
Like this was from a year ago.
I know, but I mean, we've had discussions where we can't come to an agreement. I often don't understand um.
Yeah, there has been emails from you.
Yes.
That said, who represents Fort Benton? There has been at least two, I I don't know. Yeah, and and who represents Fort Benton, so maybe she's just kind of.
I got you.
Actually asked it, in fact, just recently Monday, he asked again.
Right, oh, okay, to be more accurate. I'm on unsure legal footing with just switching around who represents who, because I do very much remember that I came on the board. When Ron Young represented Fort Benton, so at that point, when I first came on the board, I absolutely did not represent Fort Benton. And so it seems like. It seems like illegally shaky ground to be switching that around if it has any meaning at all. Like if it's meaningless, then.
I do notice um in the history, people get on this board in many ways. They're not, um they just stepped in, who stepped into? Somebody stepped in to fill in somebody's. Yeah, see, so it's, they're not always by the.
I think it's always upon by the commissioners. They don't know that, but but even then, I think we probably have to break.
I think sometimes it was. The director recommended somebody to fill in like for a debt because that's what I did. Definitely, it was a very rip tide. And then I was asked if I would be named to do that and the director then took it to the commissioners and then he was appointed. So it hasn't been a matter of application.
So that is one thing that I have been looking into and asking about um the state. Come up with the state librarians and directors from the state and as a whole. Um libraries around the state are moving to the application process. That was. When we met with Tracy in November and Robyn Stridner said she had always wanted to serve on the show, I mean, library board that had never been asked. So we were trying to move away from that so that it is a more um. Yeah. Straight word. Yeah. Procedure. Because there could be people, that's the thing with this tax thing, you know, I advertised it and I. Just was talking to someone upstairs at the desk and they said that they, it would be something they would be interested in and I would never have thought to ask that person. And that not for a board position, but for that name and so to advertise it in a variety of ways and give more people the opportunity. To provide public service. So you're, you're right, Nona, it has been very different, but we're trying to, when you fuck, when you know better, you do better. And so moving forward, it will potentially like, because I, from what I've read. You took over for somebody, Danny took over for somebody and Nancy took over for somebody.
Right in the middle.
Right, yes, all three of you took over in the, in the middle of the term. One was a courtage. I was the courtage and. Yeah, so um. Which could be part of the issue of where we are right now because it hasn't had to be done.
Because like I said, Ron was on the board, represented the board for fourteen years, eleven of those, he was not living.
Yeah, that'd be on that many years.
Otherwise, it's just ten. So this is, so I have it. Straight um. As a board, you've decided that Danny. I think we might have to proceed to a vote on the motion on the table and then. I'm moving the main motion to table this. Now, okay, you called for a vote on the motion to. To label me.
I have a. Vote on the existing motion, is that right?
I think so. That's all I'm saying, hi.
Can I just table it? Because we have, we're gonna do something. I mean, we're, we're making.
Yeah, what you could do is you could have someone, someone could move to table um and actually they could. Or indefinitely indefinitely kills the motion without even voting, definitely would be taken over at a different time, which you could. Or you can vote on the motion and vote it down or it's up to whoever.
Whatever you want me to do. So in, I moved that the motion be tabled to not indep- I mean, no.
Indefinitely.
So we can figure this out.
No, I think we. So we want it to be indefinitely or definitely.
Indefinitely, so we go.
That's the one.
No.
Okay, and you want to do definitely. And so just say I want to postpone definitely until the next.
Yeah, make that no sense to me, no sense.
Need to postpone.
Yes, definitely until.
Oh, okay, the next meeting. Alright, and then. I don't know, we need a.
You need a second and then it's non, there's no debate.
There's no debate.
Then for the second.
Okay. Okay, for seconds.
They have a second. Comment every time. So don't forget to talk for the vote, Janet.
Oh, call for the vote, so all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All opposed, same thing. Okay, and there would be no vote. Okay, forgot it, okay, turn it out.
And I don't know if any of Washington, so I think you're authorized to talk to the commissioner.
Am I too?
Yeah, I think so. You're the chair, you got all kinds of.
I'm sorry, I have to go to the. This was very sudden, but I need to care of it, so. So luck.
Yeah, thank you.
And good luck with this. I just have a question. Is the road done?
It is.
Yes. There's no.
No, you're no stopping.
Okay, but thank you. Yeah, I might, yeah. Why don't I, I'm not, it's just a good.
Thank you, Nona. Alright, so then um. Yeah, you didn't have anything else because there's nothing under there. Okay. So we are going to go into executive session. So we're gonna break for an executive session for personality, ask that everyone. To leave, it will take about twenty minutes. Tracy is going to be invited to facilitate a conversation.